Calling the April first, two thousand and twenty-four City Council Meeting for the City of Somersworth to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Pepin.
Yep.
Vincent?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Parity Cottenzero, here. Mishu?
Yeah.
Witham?
Excused.
Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Messier?
Yeah.
Counselor Goodwin will lead the council on the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, we are for to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral home land of the Abnaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabook, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are scheduled public hearings. We actually have four tonight, so I worked my way through them, one at a time. So if you are here for a specific public hearing to speak, please just wait until it is announced and then come on up. So our first public hearing tonight is on ordinance nine dash twenty-four, which is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget for the city of Somersworth. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on ordinance nine dash twenty-four, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget for the city of Somersworth? Thank you. When you come up, please state your name and the word in which you live.
Hi, guys. My name is Carrie Clark, fifty-nine Franklin Street, Somersworth School Board at Large. Thank you for holding this public hearing. I know it's not easy time. It's, you know, no one ever likes this, right? I do, I want to say, I am here tonight to express my opinion, as a mom, mostly, about the proposed education budget. You did say education budget, right? That this was a public hearing?
It's for the entirety of the budget, so the whole fiscal year.
Thank you. Yeah, so purposely is for the proposed education budget and its role in providing for basic needs of all Somersworth students. These needs include food and safe learning environments, along with a well-rounded education. Despite the budgetary constraints, these are indeed crucial factors that are significantly impact the student's ability to learn and thrive. This current proposed budget for the next coming year falls short and would not provide the funds necessary in order to provide a quality education. This shortfall is not due to excessive spending. It is simply due to an increase in the cost of the goods and services that we provide to our students. Ensuring that our schools are adequately funded to meet these basic needs is essential for the overall well-being and success of our students. It is shared responsibility that involves not just the education system, but also the community and policymakers. Our teachers and staff for years have been creative and have had to cut corners to make things work. Over time, we eventually hit a wall. We can't no longer do that. I urge you to approve the increase of Somersworth tax cap so that we may continue to provide the same quality care and education that Somersworth students need. Our teachers and staff have been creative. Oh, I said that already. That's part of my note. I didn't erase. That was my note for today. Thank you for taking this time and allowing us to come speak. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to speak on ordinance nine dash twenty-four, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget for the city of Somersworth? Anybody else? Okay, seeing that there's nobody else, I will close the public hearing on ordinance nine dash twenty-four. Next up, I will open the ordinance on, or excuse me, the public hearing on ordinance ten dash twenty-four, to amend chapter thirty-two, Water Ordinance, by amending section sixteen point one, point A, titled Rates, Fees, and Charges, to Increase the Water Utility Rates Effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Public hearing is now open. Anyone else who wishes to speak on ordinance ten dash twenty-four? All right, again, ordinance ten dash twenty-four. Seeing as there are none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance ten dash twenty-four. Next up, I have ordinance eleven dash twenty-four. I will open the public hearing on ordinance eleven dash twenty-four, which is to amend chapters eight, A, Sewer Ordinance, by amending charges, Article fifteen, Section seven, point B, titled Sewer Use Volume Charges, to Increase the Sewer Volume Charges Effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance eleven dash twenty-four? Anyone for eleven dash twenty-four? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on ordinance eleven dash twenty-four. Next up, I will open public hearing on ordinance twelve dash twenty-four, Supplemental Appropriation for Additional Funding Needed for the Water Meter Replacement Program. Anyone here tonight to speak on ordinance twelve dash twenty-four? Anyone for ordinance twelve dash twenty-four? All right, and seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance twelve dash twenty-four. That concludes public hearings for tonight. So we'll move on to Agenda Item five, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. I promise tonight to stick to the five-minute time limit. I'm sorry, I forgot last meeting. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight for public comment? Yes, please come on up. And again, when you get up here, please state your name and the word in which you live in.
My name is Matthew Bentley.
Oh, and just make sure that that mic has a green light on it. If it isn't, just press the button.
There we go.
Great, if you wouldn't mind repeating yourself.
Yep. My name is Matthew Bentley. I'm in Ward four. I live on Rowland Street. I am here to comment on an idea I have for the current chicken coop policy in Somersworth. I know Somersworth is a relatively dense city per capita, and our current chicken coop policy requires twenty feet to the nearest property line for a chicken coop. I would be amiss to say that I don't have a personal stake in this request because the perfect spot on my little humble piece of property is within twelve feet of the property line. But I did a little research, and there are other districts and towns that go down to ten feet. So I guess my, my request would be if consider updating our chicken coop property line with the nearest property line, a policy or ordinance, to ten feet. Alternatively, another idea I had was perhaps amending it to allow between ten to twenty feet with the written permission of the adjoining property owner. We're on very good terms with our neighbors and might also, you know, motivate people to be on better terms with their neighbors. Everything else about the policy is awesome. The chicken coop size, the run size, very humane, very gracious for the chickens, no roosters, you know, that kind of stuff. Everything else is good. Keep it in the backyard for good property values and stuff, but I'm an ordinance-abiding citizen, so, yeah, that was pretty much it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any other comments by visitors tonight? Any other comments by visitors? All right, without any, or without seeing any, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the State of City address held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as well as the minutes of the city council meeting held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Yes, Counselor Pepin. All right, Counselor Pepin moves the consent calendar be approved as presented, seconded by Counselor Parity Cottenzero. Question before the council is the adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, ayes appear to have it. Ayes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Item seven on our agenda is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments tonight? Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for coming out and sharing your idea. I did speak with you a few days ago about this, so I've had some extra time to think about it. I still think it's a wonderful idea, particularly allowing for a little bit more flexibility just with the written permission of the adjoining neighbors. I think that makes a ton of sense. Another good point that you had brought up was how much Somersworth is getting even more dense, especially where we're looking at more affordable housing and accessible dwelling units. I would see no objection to making that change only with the permission to adjoining property owners, and would just ask the mayor to perhaps refer this suggestion to whichever committee would make sense to review that update.
Say let's refer to recreation to start. I feel like that might be best. Thank you.
Great. Oh, continued, continued comment. I just wanted to thank Carrie for coming forward and talking about the budget, and just add that I can't tell which emails I am put on that also include the rest of the council, but I have received a substantial number of comments regarding the budget, particularly the school part of the budget, and many of them go along the same lines. Thank you for pointing out that most of the increases for the school part of the budget is just meeting our contractual obligations. We heard that as well in our joint session, so we probably won't be discussing this this evening. I don't know, but just wanted to thank you for coming forward and encourage everyone else to continue sending us your thoughts on the budget. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to re-refer to government ops because I feel like recreation, if we were putting them in parks, might make sense, but these are in people's houses. So I said it, and I was like, that doesn't seem right. But government ops, I think, might be more ideal, per recommendation of the city manager. Thank you for that. Other comments by councillors tonight? Yes, Counselor Witham.
Yes, apologies for being late tonight. I promised to catch up and watch the recorded portion online. My wife jokes with me that I watch channel twenty-two more than the other channel in the house. It's probably not a lie. It's probably true, so I'll catch up with that. It's baseball season, sort of, so people are moving around games because it's supposed to snow, so that's, that's the rumor anyways. So apologies for not being here earlier, but I'll catch up.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item eight, which is communications. We have none tonight. Agenda item nine is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We have none tonight. That brings us to Agenda Item ten, which is the mayor's report. My first item on my report tonight is a quick update for council in regards to the Willand Warming Center. Pending this storm that Counselor Witham had mentioned, I've been in communication with the other mayors from Dover and Rochester. We do not yet have confirmation, but we are looking to open the Willand Center if Carly's Home is willing to help us for these couple days of this nasty storm that we're getting. It would be just for the days of the storm to allow for folks to have safe harbor during what could be a potentially really unsafe time. So again, without objection from the council, once I have confirmation from the other mayors, I'll move forward with that and ensure that that's open. I just wanted to let you know, when I do have full confirmation, I will ask the city manager just to inform everybody, but as of right now, it's kind of in the works. Next up, I would like to report out on the mayor's summit that I attended last week at the Manchester Chamber of Commerce. We actually were hosted by the mayor of Manchester, which was great. Summit was a joint meeting between all the mayors in the state of New Hampshire. We had twelve of the thirteen. The mayor of Berlin was unfortunately unable, unable to make it that day, but there were twelve of us, which was great. Great opportunity to meet in person, share insights, resources, and ideas about, you know, many of the problems that we all face, and all the problems and things that affect the thirteen cities. We're kind of unique in that there's only thirteen of us, while there's hundreds of other towns, and so it was a great chance to kind of get together. We worked to identify many areas of focus that we, as a thirteen-member body, would like to work on, which included primarily homelessness, housing, and education, and education funding. We identified these areas and found individuals with expertise of our group of thirteen who could essentially lead policy discussions and advocacy at a breakout committee level. And so we're hoping to gather some committees and create some potential committee groups in the future where we'll work on these issues separately and then bring them back to the larger, broader group to hopefully advocate or create policy around. One of the outcomes of this meeting was a joint letter on two education funding bills that we, as a group, submitted to the House Finance Committee. This letter encouraged the House Finance Committee to pass House Bills fifteen eighty-three and sixteen fifty-six, as they were amended and passed by the House of Representatives when they met on February twenty-second. House Bill fifteen eighty-three, for those who aren't aware, aims to increase the state's annual base adequacy aid payment from forty-one hundred dollars to four thousand four hundred and four dollars per pupil, which would result in about thirty-four million dollars of increase in state funding to municipalities and assist in the education of our students. This bill also included about thirty-nine million dollars in fiscal capacity disparity aid, which would direct more funding to communities with low property values, as well as twenty-five million of additional funds for communities with high proportions of students eligible for free and reduced meals. When it was passed by the House of Representatives in February, the way that it was amended, which is what we supported, would actually provide the city of Somersworth with over a million dollars in additional funding next year if it's approved as it is by the Senate and then the governor. The second bill, House Bill sixteen fifty-six, as amended, aims to increase total spending on special education differentiated aid by about thirty-five million dollars. It would actually direct funds to schools that have students with the greatest needs. So it actually creates like a differentiated aid program, so students with the most significant needs would actually be, the districts would be awarded a larger piece of funding. Those with moderate needs would be awarded a moderately sized increase in funding, and then students with needs that don't require additional extra spending and supports would receive about the normal special education adequacy aid that currently is being provided. We felt like this would allow districts to better provide services and would help mitigate spending gaps, or I should say allocation gaps with, between years when students with significant needs move into communities, and would also just help provide services to these students in a better way. So we supported both of those bills. Unfortunately, the House Finance Committee is reviewing a number of amendments to these bills, some which would drastically alter or weaken the amount of funding that's provided, and one, in fact, which would include a state-mended spending cap on school districts that would stifle educational opportunities and put a stranglehold on our school districts and school boards. We, as mayors, certainly do not support those amendments, and we felt it was necessary to advocate for the version of the bill that not only had the most broad support when it passed the House, it was a bipartisan effort to get it through the House, but also had the most benefits for communities like our own. As the architect of this letter, I was very pleased that we were able to secure signatures of eleven of the thirteen mayors, and it was sent to the House Finance Committee as part of their public testimony during March, their March twenty-sixth hearing. Also at this summit, we determined that we will have these summit events quarterly, and the tri-cities, Dover, Rochester, and myself stepped up to host our next event in the summer. So this meeting will be a longer version. The one we had last week was only about an hour and a half. We're hoping to do about four hours where we tour the three cities and see all the offerings between the three of us. So quite excited to host coming soon. So more information soon on that. I'd also like to extend tonight a heartfelt congratulations to Public Works employee Paul Bohan, who retired last week after thirty-five years at the Public Works Department. I was really thankful to get to attend, even though it was on my lunch break from school, so it was very brief, but I got to go and actually to his retirement party last Friday and deliver proclamation, celebrating his many accomplishments and his time and tenure with the city. Thank you so much, Paul, for everything you've done for this city. It's amazing to think of the various hats you wore in your time and your thirty-five years, and I certainly hope retirement treats you well, though we will all miss you. I am sure many of us, including myself, will still see you, you know, sitting out outside in your chair, and I'll certainly be stopping by to talk about city stuff and gardening and all that. So I see you every year when I walk around, so sure, I'll see you soon. But yes, thank you, and congrats. And then my last item is I just wanted to thank the Somersworth Police Department, our Fire Department, as well as Sewards Ambulance for their food drive this Saturday at Market Basket. Stopped by to make a donation and heard that they had made multiple, multiple trips to various food parent, pantries around the region, filling up a number of them. So thank you so, so much for your community effort. I cannot say how proud I am of this type of outreach and assistance for our community, so thank you so much. And with gratitude, I respectfully conclude my mayor's report for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Your honor?
Yes.
If I may ask a question?
Sure.
It's actually, it's in regards, and I've read a lot of stuff about the warming shelter and stuff, and I know the budget that, between the three cities, but my question is this, and I just don't know if anybody in the council knows it, and I haven't come across it, and maybe I just missed it. Is there a set amount of times that the warming shelter has to open for the money, so to speak?
Not that I'm aware of. It might...
So if it's a...
...look into this, but I think it's based on weather criteria, not amount of time.
Okay, because I was wondering, because it's like, well, you know, if they had only opened ten times, then they could probably open more times in times of like snow and so forth or whatever. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Yes, Counselor Gibson?
This opening will actually be outside the window of the contract.
Correct.
Okay. Will their personnel be getting reimbursed by the cities?
Yep, likely, and again, I don't have confirmation of this, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I've communicated with the county, and I'm hoping that we can get the county to fund it. I don't have confirmation. If it does come from us, certainly it would come out of money that we have already allocated towards this, not additional funds. We have already committed fifteen thousand dollars that we have paid for within the budget that we currently have. It would not be an additional expense. I hope that clarifies.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Other questions about the warming center, since it's open to discussion at this point? Okay, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. All right. Next on the agenda is item eleven, reports of standing committees. We first up have our Finance Committee Chairman Witham.
No report from Finance tonight.
Thank you. Next up is Government Operations Committee Chairman Mishu.
Yeah, we have not met, Your Honor, but I have a feeling you'll have us meeting soon.
Yes, I've got that on your agenda now. You almost got away with it when I sent it to Recreation, but... Next up, Economic Development Committee Chairman Goodwin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development met prior to the meeting this evening, and there was just one agenda item, which was the review of two-hundred Main Street LLC's application for Chapter thirty-one, which is the community revitalization tax relief incentive, which was approved to come before council, so we will be seeing that seven-eighth application soon. That's it.
Great, thank you. Next, Public Safety Committee Chairman Pepin. All right.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Next up, Public Works and the Environment Committee Chairman Witham.
Yes, thank you. Public Works and Environment Committee met on March twenty-sixth here in City Hall. All members were in attendance. A number of city staff and two guests, the future owners of the National Guard Readiness Center on Blackwater Road, Ken Scarpetti and Doug Anderson, they were in attendance for the first agenda item. There is currently a road that enters off of Blackwater Road across from Crest. It's a short paved section that would access the parking lot for the Little League Baseball Field. It then turns to gravel and sort of meanders up in what used to be Saint Laurent Park and exits out beside the fire station onto Maple Street. A good portion of that roadway up until it becomes Parkview Terrace, which is the road that goes out beside the fire station, is best known as a paper road. It exists on, on maps, but isn't really an identified road per se. That roadway, if you will, a good portion of it likely is within the property of the National Guard Readiness Center, and if not, could be potentially part of, or along the edge of what is the Superfund site. It's sort of this who owns it nebulous area, but at the end of the day, the committee was very comfortable with that piece of property becoming part of the development of the National Guard site. According to the potential developers, at this point in time, they are planning to raise all of the buildings on that property. They have done extensive work looking at the buildings there to reuse them as part of their townhouse concept, and it just doesn't work. It's just financially not feasible to do that. They are looking to increase the number of townhomes on the property, I believe, from twenty-four to thirty, and if you think about that road off of Blackwater Road, they envision that coming in almost until where you get to the Little League parking lot, and then looping around and then coming back out on Blackwater Road closer down towards the intersection with Maple Street. So sort of like a private drive, if you will, for their development. The committee had no heartburn with the increase in the number of units. The committee had no heartburn with them needing to raise the buildings on that property or with the discontinuance of this road, provided that there were appropriate easements in place so that you could still access the Little League Field parking lot. There's also a ten-inch water line that goes cross-country from just in front of the fire station, runs parallel to the fire station and underneath this roadway, currently does provide the water service for the new fire station, both domestic water and fire suppression water, as well as water for the Little League Baseball Field. It might also provide water for the maintenance building that the National Guard has on that very end, though we could not confirm that. They may utilize that water line as part of their development opportunity. So provided the correct easements are in place for access and for the water line, the committee had no objection to the proposal. So city staff are going to work out the details if there's any action needed by council in terms of lot line adjustments or any of that, that'll come before us. It was still not quite clear at the time of our meeting. Sticking with the concept of water lines, our next discussion item was the Main Street Water Line Replacement Project from the intersection of Indigo Hill Road all the way to the Rawlinsford Line at Crockett's Crossing. That water line is a very aged water line, and because of its condition, the soils that it's in, it is one of the water lines in the city that fails with regularity, so we're always out there fixing breaks. It's about a one-mile stretch of water line, if you were to do the math out there, and oddly enough, about half of it is under city roadway. We discontinue at Netto Street, and the remainder of Main Street at that point, all the way to Crockett's Crossing, the Rawlinsford Line, is state-owned roadway. The dilemma that we face is that the state of New Hampshire now, in the final hour, as we're getting ready to prepare bid documents and bid this project, does not want us to put the water line under their section of roadway. They want us to move it to the far edge of right-of-way, which would require tree removal, utility pole relocation. There's an area that would go through wetlands, so it would require extensive permitting to get through that. Let me just say, the number of obstacles is are many, and would slow this project up considerably. We've appealed to the state a couple of different times, writing to the commissioner and others, and it seems as though they haven't been willing to budge to date. The committee encouraged city staff to continue to try to encourage the state to allow us to put it within the right-of-way, which is where our engineers had planned to put it, alongside the old water line, which would be discontinued. And if we can't get to that, the committee favors moving forward with the project only for the half-mile that is under Somersworth roadway, and we would not do the section under the state roadway. They would be fully knowledgeable that the water line would continue to break and that we'd have to continue to patch their roadway, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to us, but if the state was in, so inclined, that's where we would move that and bid the project for just the half-mile of roadway. So what's interesting, through this discussion, we've learned that there's a similar waterline project in Wolfboro that is going underneath a similar amount of state roadway, and they're allowing it to go under the state roadway there. So what seems to be okay in one state district engineering office does not seem to be the same in another district engineering office. So it's not quite fair and equitable. I'm doing my best not to badmouth the state, and I'll stop now because it won't get better. So more to come on that, but that's sort of the direction that we're heading with that project. Next item we discussed is the replacement reconstruction, if you will, of the sidewalk on High Street from Memorial from Memorial, well, actually, it's all the way to South Street, from South Street, one block down, all the way to West High Street. I think as most folks in the community know, we replaced a section of sidewalk on the easterly side of High Street during uh, that same stretch last year. Uh, we're looking to do the other side of the street this year. Last year, that was done under a TAP grant. Uh, this would be done through our roadway uh, maintenance funds in the city budget. Uh, that's coming close to the end of engineering. Uh, we discussed how uh, that will likely be far more expensive than we anticipated. That section of sidewalk from West High to Memorial Drive, South Street, uh, we're looking at about a million dollars to do that section of sidewalk. Uh, we do have, think we have the money in our roadway resurfacing budget. We probably would not be able to pave that section of High Street this year, uh, because of the increase in the cost. Uh, but we would get to it next year and put it on our spring paving list. In all likelihood, we would not be ready to pave that section of High Street this year because of the timeline of this project. It would run well into the fall, we're thinking, uh, so it would just push us off. And then we come in in the spring of next year through our next budget cycle and pave that section of High Street. So, the gateway would have new sidewalks, new roadway, and all of that, so. Uh, we're still uh, you know, finalizing some of those details, but that's sort of the direction that we're heading, uh, therefore, the time being. Next item we had, we discussed, uh, at the request of Councilor Gibson, was winter maintenance of sidewalks in the Hill District. Um, there are a number of streets, uh, both going up the hill and on the hill that, for a variety of reasons, cannot accommodate our sidewalk clearing equipment, our sidewalk tractors. They're, they're too narrow, there's uh, encumbrances, uh, retaining walls that are leaning sort of over the sidewalk. Uh, so it's just frankly not doable. Uh, that said, uh, there are sections of sidewalk that we could do. If we were to do all of the Hill sidewalks, it would add another one-point-six miles of sidewalks, uh, to clear. Uh, it's estimated that that would add another four to eight hours of clearing time for the sidewalk tractor. Um, and uh, it just seems that we struggle to keep up with the amount of sidewalks we have to clear right now. Uh, so the committee does not favor adding to those uh, roads for snow removal at this time, uh, for sidewalk clearing. Uh, Public Works Director Babinski did note that some of the Hill streets, because of their narrow nature with cars that park on the street, that occasionally, if we have a lot of snow in a winter, and this is not a good example of one, despite what's coming this week, uh, they will occasionally, as time permits, after they clean the downtown and all of that, uh, try to load out snow, haul it away from the, uh, from some of those streets on the Hill, but that's not to be confused with routine sidewalk clearing and maintenance, so. Um, so we did review it, and we're going to remain status quo, uh, as far as the committee was concerned. We then had a discussion of a couple of projects on the state's uh, ten-year uh, highway transportation plan. One involved the sidewalk on West High Street from High Street to Cemetery Road. Uh, that sidewalk is in rough shape and sort of even hard to identify where the sidewalk is at some points along that area. Uh, committee favors keeping that in the state's uh, ten-year highway plan. Um, there are matching funds needed, it's about a twenty percent match. Uh, again, that section of sidewalk, we anticipate uh, at least a million dollars, if not more. Uh, so we favor, but we did favor moving forward with that to leverage the state money there. The other is a redesign and reconstruction of the intersection at Indigo Hill Road, Blackwater Road, and High Street to get better signal a lot, uh, better alignment of the roads there. Uh, we did favor that as well. Uh, that would be a much bigger ticket item for the city, about six hundred thousand, as the projected cost for that intersection work is uh, a little more than three million dollars, so. Um, as part of our discussion about that, though, we did discuss the current signals out there. Um, Sebago Technics, which was the engineering firm for the CMAC project that upgraded all of those signals, uh, indicates that they can do a timed sequence, similar to what we've, we're doing up here, but they favor perhaps uh, adding actually some turn signal lights uh, for for Blackwater Road and for Indigo Hill Road. Uh, that would be an additional cost, uh, so waiting to get those costs to see what that would be. Uh, they think the traffic flow would just be better. Uh, there's higher traffic volume on those two side streets than there is up here, uh, so the the sequencing would be longer, uh, and they're concerned about traffic backup, quite frankly. So, we are looking to do something there. Exactly what alternative we choose is still being investigated. We do realize that what's there now is just not a good situation. We had some miscellaneous items that we discussed, uh, but nothing of consequence, so that'll conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just a point of clarification.
Go for it.
Did a great job, councilwoman, uh, reporting on that. I just wanted to add to your report that uh, there is no place to put the snow up there. That's what uh, the director actually said. Uh, it's so tight up there that even if they use, so they have to constantly bring machinery up there and remove snow. So that was one of the additional um, decision. That's what kind of the board decided not to take any action on. Just wanted to make that clear, and it was done before, obviously, because there's a school up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Council Gibson, question as well?
Uh, yeah, um, just, I'll admit, I know nothing about sewer lines or water lines, but uh, when you abandon a line, um, isn't there the risk of subsidence in the roadway?
Uh, my understanding, talking with the city engineer, that they fill it with a grout-like material that then hardens, and it becomes a flowable fill, I think is the term, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Fascinating, flowable fill. Um, thank you. Uh, lastly, we have Recreation Committee, Councilwoman Cameron.
Thank you, your honor. Um, you'll have to bear with me, I'm kind of winging it, I have no minutes from the meeting, so here goes. Um, we met on March twentieth, and uh, first item on the agenda was about the Ash Street Park. And there are going to be some improvements coming in the second phase of it. There is plans for what type of plants to plant, and the trees that we'll be planting around there. Um, they're looking into another grant from Home Depot to help with the pollinator plants and the trees and whatever else they can help, um, with upgrading it. Um, if there is a small balance of the city project fund that exists, and we could use some of that to purchase other plantings for what Home Depot doesn't cover. Um, they went over there to look to see if there are any repairs that needed to be done after the winter, and there weren't any, so that was encouraging that it hasn't been tampered with. Um, we also had talked about a butterfly life cycle sign to be put out there, and city staff was going to go out there and kind of adjust the size of the sign, this, to go from there, to see what size would be appropriate. And then we're going to have a sign out there, um, showing the migration of the butterfly. And another interesting one we were looking at was to have like a um, a butterfly put out there, and I don't know if anybody can really see this, but it's picture of butterfly, and to have it done up so that your kids could have pictures taken with the butterfly at the butterfly park. So we're kind of very excited about that. Um, so we're waiting to hear back on how that's going to progress and what um, we'll be able to do. And after that, we talked about the Malley Farm, and we have um, USA Softball of New Hampshire that is looking to um, have some tournaments out there this year, and they will help maintain the infield, help with concession, porter parties, dumpster trash removal, um, and any small repairs that would need to be done. And we're hoping if this year is successful, they might be looking into a second year being more long-term out there. So that's kind of very exciting. Um, the tournaments will start in May, June, and end around the second week of August, and possibly some fall ball opportunities out there as well, and that could possibly, uh, possibly bring two hundred to four hundred people to Summersworth. So kind of very exciting, because that's bringing a lot of people into the city and showing them what we got here, so that's very exciting. And um, they talked about, um, the, the rec director talked about how great the rec desk um, was working for them, the online registration for their programming. She said it's the best thing that ever happened to them, and it's very successful, so we're very glad to hear that as well. And our meeting ended about five o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to agenda item twelve, which is reports of special committees. Are there any report, uh, reports of special committees tonight? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, your honor, members of com, uh, members of council. Uh, I have the following comments this evening. And quite frankly, under unfinished business, I don't have anything further to offer as far as new information. Jumping over to new business, ordinance thirteen twenty-four, to amend chapter nineteen in our zoning ordinance, table uses. We get, um, and it, it's just, it's table four-point-eight-point-five, if you're interested in looking it up, under chapter nineteen, it's be adding notes eleven through eleven-point-four regarding motor vehicle service-related uses within the residential commercial district. Economic Development Committee of Council met on March fourth, and after discussion, voted to support this ordinance being moved to the full council for consideration and vote. I provide you a copy of the memorandum that Director Michelle Meers prepared regarding these proposed amendments, along with a ridline version of these zoning sections. And I recommend, your honor, a public hearing prior to the next, or at the next regular council meeting on April fifteenth.
Without objection.
Under informational items, I will add the following. I am very pleased to announce the selection of Lieutenant Matthew Moore as the city's next fire chief, and in that capacity, I'll, I will also be appointing him as the city's emergency management director. Matt was selected after an extensive assessment process. Matt has been with the Summersworth Fire Department for over twenty-three years. Matt began his career as a call firefighter in May of two thousand. He was later hired as a full-time firefighter in December of two thousand and one, and promoted to lieutenant in April of two thousand sixteen. Matt is a graduate of Summersworth High School and a United States Navy veteran. Matt is very excited and honored to take on his new post, as he shared with me, and in turn, I am very excited on his ability to take on this new leadership role at the Summersworth Fire Department. He is also looking forward to working with the city's management team as he takes on his new post, as they are looking forward to working with him. Matt also shared with me that he is the third member of his family to hold the position of chief for the Summersworth Fire Department, following his great-grandfather Arthur Netto, who was fire chief of the department, and grandfather Mark Netto, who was assistant fire chief there. Matt will be officially sworn as fire chief on May sixth at Summersworth City Hall at a time to be determined. Matt, if you could just stand up so folks don't know who you are, they can see who you are, and congratulations. That concludes my report, your honor, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Very excited to have you in the role.
Your honor.
Yes.
I, I know it's probably not in order, because it's not on the agenda, but I just want to publicly thank Matt and welcome him to the new role. You know, it's been a long time since we've had a member from the ranks, uh, even put their name in to be a fire chief here in Summersworth, so I think that's tremendously exciting. I think it, it shows the growth opportunities within the department, uh, and I thank Matt for doing that and accepting the challenge. Uh, we are in very good hands, so welcome aboard.
Your honor.
Thank you.
Yeah. For my comment also.
Absolutely.
You know, I spent thirty-three years at the Summersworth Fire Department, and uh, Matt's whole career was actually when I was there, along with my sidekick and Dave with him, council with him also, we were all there. You know, we're all, uh, it was a, it was a good family, it really was, it was, we helped out a lot of people, and you know, Matt is a stand-up guy, he was on my shift for several years. Uh, very educated man, I'm so proud of you, and you couldn't have said it better, Dave. You know, to keep uh, it inside the city, uh, this is way that someone knows uh, what's been going on, what's, what goes on inside, what the, how the guys are, or the girls are, you know, because there are men and women, or women who work there also, not at this time, but there were, so. And in, in theory, to speak, that, that women work, you know, in other departments, and we've had uh, several women out of the station, so. But I can't tell you how excited I am and proud that we're keeping it inside. Uh, and it just, uh, I think it just does, uh, just a tremendous, and I mean tremendous, uh, thing for morale, so to speak. Uh, so welcome aboard, Matt, man, you deserved it, you're a smart guy, you're an educated guy, you know what's going on, you've, you've used your head, and this wasn't given to you, you worked for it very hard, and I'm, and I'm proud to say that, and thank you, and congratulations, buddy.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. All right. That moves us to agenda item thirteen, uh, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Um, under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with council rule seventeen, appointments of following are being brought forward tonight, uh, for appointment. Uh, first up is Bradley Fredette for reappointment to the zoning board of adjustments with a term to expire April twenty twenty-seven. What are the wishes of the council tonight? And we already had our first reading, looking for a second, Councilor Perdy Catanzaro.
I'll move for the approval of the nomination.
All right, Councilor Perdy Catanzaro, uh, moves to confirm the nominee, seconded by Councilor, uh, Mischu. Question for the council tonight is on the confirmation of Bradley Fredette for reappointment to the zoning board of adjustments with a term to expire April twenty twenty-seven. Discussion? All right, seeing none. If you are in favor of the motion, we will please state by saying aye.
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 All right, all those opposed, please state by saying nay.
No.
All right, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the nominee has been confirmed. Uh, next up, we have Nancy Mitchell for appointment to the library board of trustees with a term to expire April twenty twenty-nine. What are the wishes of the council? Yes, Councilor Cameron.
I'll make the motion to nominate.
All right, Council Cameron moves to confirm the nominee, is that right? Yes, seconded by Councilor Goodwin. Uh, question for the council is on the confirmation of Nancy Mitchell for the appointment, uh, to the library board of trustees with a term to expire April twenty twenty-nine. Discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none. If you are in favor of the motion, please state by saying aye.
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 If you are opposed, please state by saying nay. All right, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, nominee is confirmed. Uh, lastly, tonight, we have Sarah Roberts Terry for appointment to the library board of trustees with a term to expire April twenty twenty-nine. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to approve the nominee.
Thank you, Council Witham moves to approve the nominee, uh, seconded by Council Gibson. Question for the council is on the confirmation of Sarah Roberts Terry for appointment to the library board of trustees with a term to expire April twenty twenty-nine. Discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, if you are in favor of the motion, please state by saying aye.
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 If you are opposed, please state by saying nay. All right, ayes appear to have it, ayes have it, and the nominee has been confirmed. Uh, next up, we have item fourteen, which is items that have been laid upon the table. Tonight on the table, we have ordinance nine dash twenty-four, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, since we have a budget workshop this Saturday, April sixth, starting at eight-thirty AM, it would certainly be my recommendation that this remain on the table until we have had our workshop. If anyone wishes to make a motion otherwise, you're welcome to, but that's my recommendation. Seeing none, it will remain on the table for now. All right, next up is agenda item fifteen, which is unfinished business. Uh, the chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on ordinance ten dash twenty-four to amend chapter thirty-two water ordinance by amending section sixteen-point-one-point-A titled Rates, Fees, and Charges to increase the water utility rates effective July first, twenty twenty-four, and July first, twenty twenty-five, which, if approved, would increase water rates to five dollars ninety-four cents per hundred cubic feet starting July first, twenty twenty-four, and then to six dollars fifty-three cents per hundred cubic feet beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. City clerk.
Ordinance number ten twenty-four, to amend chapter thirty-two water ordinance by amending section sixteen-point-one-point-A titled Rates, Fees, and Charges to Increase the Water Utility Rates Effective July first, twenty twenty-four, and July first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Ordinance ten dash twenty-four, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Okay, no amendment being offered, the chair will look for a motion on ordinance ten dash twenty-four. Yes, Council Witham?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Council Witham moves to adopt ordinance ten dash twenty-four, seconded by Council Messier. Uh, motion before the council is to adopt ordinance ten dash twenty-four, discussion. Yes, Council Witham?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I don't take it lightly that this is a rate increase. When it was discussed at committee level, we were very thoughtful in terms of.
When it was discussed at committee level, we were very thoughtful in terms of how that rate increase would be applied. It's a fee, it's a rate, some people might call it a form of tax, but what this does is support that particular enterprise fund, that being the water fund. What we've tried to do over a number of years here is to be thoughtful in our approach to rate increases, where we've sort of continued to nudge them up, knowing that we have large capital projects looming, an upgrade to the water treatment facility. I just talked about the water line replacement on Main Street. These are million-plus-dollar projects. We are in need of replacing the water tank, the standpipe up at Noble Pines. That's a six, seven, eight, who knows, $9 million project. These are very expensive capital projects, and by nudging up our utility rates gradually over time, we're able to keep pace so that we can have cash on hand to operate, to do repairs, and to tee us up so that we're not looking at huge capital outlays impacting the rate all at once. So, it's a gradual step process versus an all-at-once whack. The last thing I would say about this, and the comments I'm saying here apply to the next ordinance on the sewer, so I'll save that one, but when you compare our water or sewer rates to surrounding communities, we are still below and very in line with our neighbors. So, we're well-positioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Gibson.
Okay, my one concern would be, it may feel like a nudge to the chairman, but 10% two years in a row on the rates, you're already looking at property tax increases, as well as people have been hammered left and right with inflation and cost of services in general. Is there a reason why it could not be spread over a longer timeframe to lower the impact to the homeowners in the community and the businesses?
Are you looking for a question or an answer from Counselor Witham? I'll open it to him if that's okay with you.
Yes, please. Yeah, I could tell you that the city staff, Finance Director Smith, had done a number of calculations, looking at different options, and that's the one that we seem to favor. Certainly could do it spread out smaller over a number of years, but I'm not sure that gets us to where we need to get quick enough. That was part of our discussion. There's sort of a target we need to get to, and that was part of the calculation. So, I'm not sure that smaller increments over more years gets us there fast enough, but I would defer that to Director Smith or the City Manager, however we feel fit.
City Manager, do you have any more that you would like to add? Counselor Gibson, you still have the floor if you have any other questions or comments.
If somebody has more information, I'm open.
All right, yes, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, you know, I'm concerned about that also, because I'm the, I think sometimes I'm the guy who's more concerned about money here than some other council members, just looking at all around, because I'm always the guy that's looking at the cash. And I agree, but you have to understand something. I think that when you look at the sewage treatment plant, when we just spent millions of dollars on that, we kind of are leading now the other waste treatment plants in the state. I mean, we had people that came to us and said, wow, you guys took this big jump and like, you're got one of the better treatment plans. Another thing that came into play was that we are still cheaper, and I get 10%, Counselor. I hear you, I hear you 100%, but we are still cheaper than all the surrounding communities. And I don't mean to say, you know, oh, because we're cheaper, let's just raise the rate. We have some big ticket items that Counsel Witham had mentioned. We have to put up a water tank on the hill that's going to cost millions of dollars. Hopefully, we'll get funder funding. So, that, I just wanted to kind of explain that a little bit more. Hope that kind of explains it for you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Gibson.
I'll trade you lower water rates for higher tax rates. It's, it's fine to be cheaper on one thing than other communities, but we're still one of the highest tax rates in the state, and the individuals paying the water bills are also paying the property taxes.
Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Peppin.
I think when we discuss this, is that the City Manager and Scott are basically kind of like looking down the road of what we're going to have to have to spend in the future. I mean, there's always upgrades on our water treatment plant, there's always upgrade on our sewage treatment plants, they're always, they're in the works now. The architects are working on them now. We're looking at putting a new tank on top of the pines, which basically is being pushed ahead of times, because we can't put a cover on the top of it, because no one will, the estimates are just sky-high, and it's better off just to replace it. So, what we're trying to look to do is that to do these increases now, that is not going to put us into a situation that we have to do a huge increase at a time when all these bills are coming in at one time, and then you're going to have to pay them all at one shot. So, I think that that was the whole discussion of trying to get not so much ahead of it, but keep a balance, and making sure that we have the money available when it comes time to do these projects, because lots of times, we don't have any control over it. The state tells us what to do down the sewage treatment plant, state tells us what to do, we want a quality of water, we have to improve these things. I don't think you have to go too far across the border over there, see how, what their water problems are over there. We don't have that problem, because we're fortunate to look for it into the future, and I think that's very, very important. So, I don't think it's just because we want to increase the water rates, it's because we're trying to plan that it's not going to make a big impact when all these things have to be done all at one time. And when I ran for City Council, that's what I ran on basically, is that kind of like plan for the future, just don't wait till the thing happens and that we have to lump it out all at one time. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Other discussion tonight? Yes, Counselor Messier.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of said. What this does is minimize the cost later, because they've done a long-range plan, looking at the future projects that we got. If we want the community to grow, you've got to have a good wastewater plant, you've got to have a good infrastructure and water plant. Both those are most likely, at some point, are going to need another upgrade. Let's also not lose sight of the fact that when we do roads, complete streets or whatever, we save the taxpayer money, because some of those monies for the water or sewer come out of these funds. I mean, it's good business to have money in these funds that help minimize the cost of projects that are laid in date. They're enterprise funds, that's what the intent is to do. Nobody likes increases, but it's a reality. I'd rather minimize the cost now than pay a huge sum or have to take it out of the undesignedated. And that's really not the way you should do it with the enterprise fund. So, I support both of these ordinances and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor.
One other quick thing to mention is, when you start adding multiple units of living space, you have to have the capacity to be able to feed those units. You know, you do a 200 here, a 100 over here, and over there, so you have to have that capacity. So, that's why making an increase definitely helps us to be able to stay ahead of the game.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Gibson.
I agree with what the other counselors are saying in large part. The only thing I wonder, these projects are all going to be bonded, which will be over a period of somewhere between 10 and 20 years. I'm not sure what it would be. That's where I'm coming from, is these are not all going to be bills hitting at the same time, they're going to be broken into increments as far as paying for them. So, that's, I guess, where my confusion comes from.
Other discussion tonight? Right. So, again, the motion on the table is to approve Ordinance 10-24. If you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 10-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
No.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 10-24 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 11-24 to amend Chapter 8A Sewer Ordinance by amending charges Article 15, Section 7.B titled Sewer Use Volume Charges to Increase the Sewer Volume Charges Effective July 1st, 2024, and July 1st, 2025, which if approved, would increase sewer rates to $8.83 per 100 cubic feet starting July 1st, 2024, and then to $9.75 per 100 cubic feet beginning July 1st, 2025. City Clerk.
Ordinance Number 1124, to amend Chapter 8A Sewer Ordinance by amending charges Article 15, Section 7.B titled Sewer Use Volume Charges to Increase the Sewer Volume Charges Effective July 1st, 2024, and July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Ordinance 11-24, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Right, seeing no amendment. Chair will look for a motion on Ordinance 11-24. Counselor Witham?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Counselor Witham moves for the adoption of Ordinance 11-24, seconded by Counselor Mishu. Motion for the council is to adopt Ordinance 11-24. Discussion? Seeing none. If you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 11-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
No.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
Ordinance 10-24 has been adopted. Oh, 11, thank you. That's the second time I've done that. Yes, thank you. 11-24 has been adopted. Good catch. No, no, that's a good catch. That brings us to 12-24. Chair recognizes clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 12-24, Supplemental Appropriation for Additional Funding Needed for the Water Meter Replacement Program, which if approved, would appropriate $75,000 from the water fund and $50,000 from the sewer fund for the water meter replacement program. City Clerk.
Ordinance Number 1224, Supplemental Appropriation for Additional Funding Needed for the Water Meter Replacement Program.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-24, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment. Chair will look for a motion on Ordinance 12-24. Counselor Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Counselor Witham moves for the adoption of Ordinance 12-24, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Motion before the council is to adopt Ordinance 12-24. Is there discussion? All right, seeing none. Before we vote, I just want to remind council that because this is supplemental appropriation, I will need a two-thirds majority vote for passage. Just want to make that clear. Is that clear to folks? Okay? If you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 12-24, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Messier.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
Ordinance 12-24 has been adopted. All right, brings us to Resolutions tonight under Old Business. Chair recognizes clerk for a second reading on Resolution 41-24 to authorize City Manager to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software, Inc. of Cary, North Carolina, for smart gov software for the Department of Developmental Services, which if approved, would utilize $48,386 of funds to purchase a digital permitting and management software. City Clerk.
Resolution Number 4124, to authorize the City Manager to use funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the Cable Fund to contract with Brightly Software, Inc. of Cary, North Carolina, for smart gov software.
Thank you. Resolution 41-24, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment. Seeing none. Chair will look for a motion. Yes, do you have an amendment?
I don't know if, well, I would like to see other funding source for it and have the cable fund removed from it.
Do you have a funding source on hand to make up the difference?
No.
For the amendment?
I don't think it's appropriate usage of the cable fund.
Okay.
That should be debate rather than.
Is that an amendment that he's offering?
Yeah, I would need an amendment.
Okay.
If your amendment is to... Say that again, I'm sorry.
I withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Other amendments before we move to discussion? Okay. So, again, I think I still need a motion, actually.
Motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Witham moves for the adoption of Ordinance 12, or excuse me, Resolution 41-24, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Now I will open to discussion. There's discussion. Yes, Counselor Gibson.
I don't believe that that's an appropriate usage of the cable fund money. Cable fund was to enhance the electronic services pertaining to City Hall's cable system, the schools' cable systems, to buy software. I question the validity of that.
Counselor Goodwin.
I'm not super familiar with what the cable fund is, but if that were the intent, I certainly think there's value in very broadly interpreting that intent of improving communications with technology for the government, either the school or the city hall. This software is doing that. It is reducing paperwork, it is making electronic transactions easier and more seamless, so I think I would broadly interpret the intent of the cable fund to be met by this software.
Counselor Witham.
Yeah, I'd certainly accept a challenge to my understanding, but I have always had that same understanding that the cable fund, it has been broadly interpreted, it's not steadfast as to what it's to be used for. Counselor Gibson is right, it is designed to help with our airing of public access, the cameras and the equipment for that, but it has been broadly interpreted for things as, like this software, which help with communication and ease of doing business. So, we've used it in that manner before.
Thank you. Counselor Messier.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I support this resolution. I went to a neighboring community, and that planning department uses a, not this exact one, but a similar one. Their's a little more restrictive. If you don't use theirs, then you get pushed further in the line. We don't have that here, so it just brings us into the 21st, or 2nd, whatever century we're in, so. And as one that had angst about monies used out of the cable fund, I'm going to go along with this one. We've done other projects that it's kind of a stretch, but it's a piggy bank for some people to spend money, so we have to approve it. So, there you go.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. When this cable fund was set up, there had to be some type of definition for what it was going to be spent for. It'd be nice to be able to see what, maybe what was in the minutes, maybe someone can go back and find them. But the second comment is, look, our poor permitting and planning department has been, has had nothing at all. Now this changes the whole game. You now can go online and apply for permits, you can do so much stuff, and it helps them out to be able to really come up into the age. It's expensive in dollar, you know, it really is, but it's what the community needs to kind of get us into like the present, so to speak. So, I'm definitely for it, but it would be kind of nice to know what that definition is, because I think we've used the cable fund for everything, and I'm not trying to be, you know, a wise guy, I just think that'd be nice. Maybe it is, maybe we can't spend it on anything, I don't know.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
No. That was not the intent. The intent was to provide upgrades to the cable systems in the city, and the reason I know that is, I sat on that committee, and turning it into a piggy bank for anything is totally inappropriate use of funds. I wasn't here for any other uses of it, so I don't know what happened in the past, but I will not vote to approve this.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Witham?
I put a great deal of faith in our city staff in not utilizing something that, utilizing a fund that it can't be used for, so I'll start with that, right? So, let me just say... say that I I I trust city staff to do the right thing. And then, like so many things in city government, we have a series of checks and balances. Every resolution and ordinance that come before us are run in front of an independent third-party legal counsel. So legal counsel has reviewed this resolution and have deemed it to be appropriate. So if legal counsel felt that the use of the cable fund was inappropriate, they too could have flagged it. So I have trust in city staff, plus the vetting through legal counsel. I'm gonna put my eggs in those baskets. The chicken thing's running rampant tonight.
Yeah, lots of chicken chicks. Yes, counselor, uh let's let counselor Peppin go. He hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll have you own after. Thank you. Go ahead.
I guess one of the things I'm a little confused about is that when we were told about this program and stuff like this, I thought it was, uh the way it was explained that people would be able to go online and access different information as far as building permits and and guidelines and everything else. Uh as far as I know, that comes through cable. Uh rather you look at it through the internet. Uh so I don't know what we're arguing this for, but um it it is what it is, I guess.
Thank you. Counsel Gibson?
Never mind.
Okay. Others for discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh if you are in favor of the adoption of resolution forty-one dash twenty-four, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel with them?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Messier?
Yeah.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
No.
Parity Cotton Zero?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Resolution forty-one dash twenty-four has been adopted. Right, brings us to new business. Uh I believe we just have one tonight. Uh chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four to amend chapter nineteen zoning ordinance. Oh, you have a quick, um, go ahead.
Can we have it read by title only? It's only, it's like three pages long unless...
If that's a motion, it's a second.
We have a motion by counselor Messier to read by title only, seconded by counsel with them. Is there, uh I got no discussion on that one. That's just non-debatable, if I remember correctly. Oh, right, thank you. I don't know these things yet. I'm learning. Yeah, uh so I will open that to discussion if folks would like to. All right, again, yes, counselor Gibson, go for it.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
I wanna go home.
I love it. All right, seeing no other discussion. Again, the motion tonight is to read ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four by title only. If you are, what's that? Yeah, wave council rules, excuse me. Thank you. Read, wave council rules to read ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four by title only. Um, if you are in favor of this, uh you will please state by saying aye.
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 You are opposed, state by saying no. Right, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We will read by title only. Clerk, will you please read ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number thirteen twenty-four to amend chapter nineteen zoning ordinance, table of uses, table four point eight point five, and adding notes eleven through eleven point four regarding motor vehicle service-related uses within the residential commercial district.
Thank you. All right. Ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four having been read a first time, uh will remain in first reading until uh after our public hearing next meeting and uh will be then read at that point. All right, brings us to agenda item seventeen, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you uh to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with council rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into debate with any person, mayor, city council members, city manager, or department heads. Thank you for being here tonight. If you'll just make sure that's on and state your name and where do you live in.
My name is John Joyl. I live at One Marley Lane in Somersworth. For those of you that don't know me. That's why I'm here. Years ago, when I came here, thirty-four years ago, I bought property in this city, reasonably priced at the time, unlike the property is today. But anyhow, uh I used to take my wallet out of my back pocket to let civil servants, of which I'm a retired civil servant, know that every time you blink, you take money out of the taxpayers' wallet. Okay, unfortunately, that's the way it is. It's called paying it forward. Took me all these years to feel figure that out, but I read a lot of things about health and how I can prolong my life uh because of some of the things that I'd been experiencing. But as a property owner, it gives me great satisfaction to know. Uh Robert Bellmore, city manager, thank you very much for making Matt Moore fire chief. I can't thank you enough for that. And and I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Bellmore and a couple of his department heads over the last year plus, uh with some tree issues and some other things. And thank you for that also. But, you know, I I used to get up here all the time and and preach to people uh about the the way that it should be. So I I've, I've done some of the stuff that you people are doing, and I commend you immensely. Uh but I I can't thank you enough. Uh my my family, my wife and I, and my daughter, thank you very much for making Matt Moore the fire chief in this city. Uh when I found that out the other day at the at the Market Basket, uh when they had the the food drive, uh it brought a lot of satisfaction to me. I've fought tooth and nail uh on on their budget and other things over the years through city councils coming and gone and found that out that uh promoting within, that's good, good duty for the city. And and I I have to thank you again for for making that choice. You, I think you hit that right on the nose. And and knowing that he he comes from a well-to-do, established people in the past in that position, that that wounds my heart. So thank you very much. That's all I really wanted to say. I I can't tell you enough uh how much that enlightens me. But back, back to the reading about my my good health. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments by visitors tonight? Other comments by visitors? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to closing comments by council members. We'll start to my right. Counsel with them?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Goodwin?
Thank you, your honor. Um, just wanted to speak to uh an up, just a reminder that the next um uh Economic Development Committee meeting on April eleventh, I believe, at four thirty, seven PM, thank you, um, is a, is a community meeting to discuss the reuse of the uh one Winter Street property, the former Brighton Cleaner site, uh which the city owns, um had previously put out to RFP to no success, and then um had uh also assessed a food truck uh sort of establishment there that uh seems less feasible now. So I want to have a community meeting to engage folks in the dialogue on what the city might be able to do with that site. Um so please help get the word out and come join that conversation so we can um uh, you know, figure out our next steps forward. I also wanted to speak to uh the new business from this evening, ordinance thirteen dash twenty-four, which is amending chapter nineteen, uh the zoning ordinance, uh to remove uh car-related, motor related services from the residential commercial district, uh which is the zoning district along High Street. Um, this is a, an important item for me. Um, and I think it speaks to a number of sentiments that have been mentioned earlier when we were talking about the water and sewer fee adjustments. It comes down to uh long-range planning and planning for the future. And that putting our best foot forward along our most visible corridor, really our front door to much of our community is High Street. And uh we have done much to uh provide needed services such as car repair and car washes. Um, and it's spinning the tax base by allowing that type of development. However, I believe we've reached a point where uh the city needs to lead on what the next phase of development on High Street looks like. Uh, we have uh three car washes on High Street currently. There are two on one oh eight and one just across the border border in Dover. So that's six car washes in less than a three-mile radius. Uh, interestingly, after this came through, um, uh, the the one of the reasons this came up, one of the reasons I brought this up to the committee, was that during my time on the planning board, we had approved the new car wash that's next to Walmart. Um, you know, that was in construction. And then we had an application um come in for uh an an initial review for another car wash across the street from um, from Goodwill on the last remaining Greenfield site on High Street, really. Uh, and my first reaction, and I feel like much of the board members' reactions was groan, another car wash, a car wash across from a car wash. Um, and thankfully, that, you know, I don't say this lightly, but thankfully that applicant withdrew. Um, and that car wash is not currently being planned. Um, however, I think we should be proactive in guiding growth along our front door to be um more forward-looking, higher value. Our community is well-served by these businesses already. It would still be permitted, uh permitted use in other zones. Um, oh, and anyway, since since that initially came up in the Economic Development Committee meeting, there's actually been a number of national reporting on the proliferation of car washes. So Bloomberg did a piece, NPR has also done a piece. Um, and it essentially boils down to a private equity bubble, uh in that there are, uh, there's a lot of wealth uh out there seeking passive income, and this is a trendy mechanism for people with means to build a facility that uh hires very few people. So there's not really contributing to the local economy. There's coin-operated, um, card-operated machines, um, uh subscription services and one or two employees, and you've got a steady stream of income. So that's a nice gig for them. It's a valuable service, but do I want a private equity bubble um building redundant services that then ultimately get abandoned and then uh the city is left with a vacant property, of which we also have several vacant um car-related businesses, two gas stations on High Street, which are vacant. So I don't want to see more vacant car-related uses, which is why um that part of the ordinance uh was brought forward. The second is also, second part of that ordinance, uh is also coming from insights during my time on the planning board. You know, it's not often that you get a room full of people uh that come out to public meetings. And two of the times that that happened during my time on the planning board was because existing uh auto repair facilities were causing so much noise that the abutting community came out in number. Um, our existing ordinance does have a a buffer between those uses and residential areas. It is clearly insufficient. So that needs to be increased. Uh, and there are a number of other um remediating factors that are proposed in the zoning update that will help limit uh the nuisance complaints that uh abutting residential properties have. Again, these are needed services. I'm not trying to uh make car repair inaccessible, but uh I do think the livability of our city requires us to be mindful about uh where we put it. Um, and on our front door and direct to uh residential areas is not uh, not serving us as well as it could. So with that, uh, I conclude.
Thank you. Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I too would like to publicly congratulate Mr. Moore on your promotion. I know you'll serve the city well, and I know the community is very excited to have you lead us onward. And Johnny Joyl, I've never seen you so excited in my life about something, except when we talk about plants in your garden. And on a last note, three weeks from this Saturday, April twentieth, is gonna be the kickoff of Don't Trash Somersworth. So I would like to invite everybody, it's one hour of your time. That's Saturday from two to three. We're gonna meet at the upper parking lot of Home Depot, and we'll clean from Handle Drive down Commercial Drive down to the Willand Warming Center. That will be our first place to go. And I'm very excited about kicking it off, and I look forward to having a big turnout. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, next up, counselor Messier?
Thank you. Uh, a couple of things. The housing committee that's doing some housing work, whatever. I don't know if anybody read in on the Foster's Line or whatever paper, ADUs, Dover is actively trying to recruit, hear the word, recruit, homeowners to put in two, if they can, auxiliary um dwelling units, whatever. I don't know in the community here if we've even attempted it. And Dover also got a credit union to help fund some of that money. I would hope that we could look at that because that is a viable option that can help, whether it's small or whatever, that can help. Not saying you have to do two. I don't have a problem with two. If they have parking, they have enough parking, it doesn't infringe upon a neighbor, and they have sewer and water or whatever, then I don't have a problem with that. Um, so that's enough on that. I hope we can look at auxiliary dwelling units. And then uh ordinance, future ordinance thirteen twenty-four, if it'd be possible to get a map where they hope to do this. Um, the outcry came from Firestone in that neighborhood, and that's why. Uh, I don't know, as government should be picking winners and losers of businesses with an existing footprint. Um, here's what's gonna go, development, funny it comes out of economic development, economic development, you should want to develop economics. Retail has gone down, not, not done well. So now you're gonna say you're gonna exclude people to have their cars worked on at shops or whatever. Not that I have a problem with many. I do have a problem with some of the shops that are existing, but they were old and on existing property. Is this strictly High Street, or are you going down one away? Because I also read in some of the initial stuff, had to do with car dealerships. So all of a sudden now, we're gonna pick winners and chooses on that? I don't think that's what it is. Economic development, what is your viable alternative for some of the existing lawns for for development? All houses? That's interesting. But, I mean, people need, you you criticize car washes. People like myself, I really don't want to wash my car. I'll go through the car wash, whether I put the card in or whatever, I don't care. The cards used every, you go to the Garden in Boston, you don't bring cash, you can't, they don't accept cash. That's the way everything is done these days, or a lot of things, not everything. So I do have some concerns on thirteen twenty-four at this point in time, and this isn't a threat. This is just most likely a promise, that I'm not going to support it, but I'm only one out of nine. Um, so that's all, enough on that. Um, couple of few positive things, the food drive that was spoken about at Home Depot, Home Depot, Market Basket. I'd like to thank all of the participants, Rollinsford PD and Fire, I believe, were there, uh Somersworth PD and Fire, Stewarts. Um, so I wanna, I think that was a wonderful thing right there. It was busy when I was there, so I want to thank them all. Also, in our police department, I don't know if everybody noticed on Facebook that Officer Tully had a service dog to one of our elementary schools. Um, I think that's a wonderful thing. That's where your point source reduction, where you get the attitudes towards police officers to be a start, to be a positive light. Um, so whatever they do is 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 a wonderful thing for me with that. Also, some of our police officers going to their former colleges and helping with recruitment of police officers. Um, selection of the new, the selection of the new fire chief, Mr. Moore, is an outstanding select, for everything that was said tonight. Homegrown entity, grow from within. Uh, and we'll see what goes on, you know, with the assistant chief and then the lieutenant to backfill his position. Um, for another shout-out to an employee, Anna from... For another shout-out to an employee, Anna, from the planning department, did a lot of the legwork and work on that Brightly Software Incorporated, so I know it's your job, but thank you. So I don't try to leave with that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Peppin.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Matt, congratulations. Your family goes back a long ways with me. Your great-grandfather, Artin Neto, put me on the Call Department, so I served under him when he was, when he was chief. So I guess I'm showing my age right now. And I learned so much off of him, especially us coming in not knowing nothing, and he gave me the fuel to keep on going into the fire service, to actually love it as much as I loved it from every day I served there. Your grandfather, Mark Neto, wasn't just Assistant Chief, he was also my shift officer. So I served with him practically almost all my private life with him almost, as a permanent firefighter. They both taught me so much in the fire service. So I know it's in your blood. I've listened to Chief Hoyle say nothing but good for you. Chief Delna, this guy here beside me has high praise for you. I think we only served probably four years, and I don't think you were on my shift, so I didn't really get a chance to really know you personally that deeply well as much as the rest of these guys have. But there is, your bullet line goes deep into the fire service, and I have no doubt in my mind you'll probably be the best chief of Somersworth ever had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make a comment on the dual dwelling of the additional dwelling unit. At the State House, we heard the bill this past week, and I was, I did not vote for it. I just can't see, it's just a comment, I'm not gonna stand along, but I just can't see having a commercial or a residential neighborhood that has 20 homes and now they have 60 families in there. I think it's gonna be a zoo. I don't think it passed the State House, I can't remember, and I apologize. I think we did 40 or 50 bills, we were there till 7:00 at night, and it was a very testing day, but nevertheless, that was my on that. And one more comment about what you talked about, about High Street. You know, I got here six years ago, and I've said this, and I'll continue to say it, that Main Street was Main Street, but the new Main Street's High Street because that's the corridor to our city. And I'm not trying to dog Main Street anymore, they're just, it's not, it's not the corridor to our city. It's kinda mellowed out. It's a great neighborhoods to live in and stuff, but High Street's the corridor, and, you know, and we looked at the new project that's coming in with sidewalks and stuff, and I even questioned that, voting against it, because we really need space. I mean, that may be an extension, and I know it's in Dover, of, you know, the Miracle Mile, Central Avenue. There's double lanes down there, you know, and that may eventually extend up here into us, into close to the City Hall. I just, you know, man, there's 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, and you need a sidewalk anyway, so it'll make it good to have. But I just think that this city needs to focus on that whole deal right down High Street because I think that's where we should put our money and the growth and just when you come into the city, this is what you see, and I'm all for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
All set.
Thank you. Counselor Parity Cat and Zero.
Good evening. Welcome and congratulations to the new Fire Chief. Heard nothing but wonderful things about you. Very, very excited for this next period in Somersworth. Also wanted to express my excitement at our new superintendent as well. I saw in the paper that John Shea was approved, speaking of somebody else coming back into the city who's had some wonderful work done here already, so just very excited about that. That's all tonight.
Thank you. Lastly, Counselor Messier.
Thank you, Your Honor. Matt, I also wanna congratulate you on your new position as Fire Chief. I did not realize the family history you had, so I'm realizing you're the perfect fit for this job, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 19, which is future agenda items. Are there any agenda items requested for future meetings? Okay, seeing none. That'll bring us to 20, which is non-public sessions we have done. Last is Agenda Item 21, adjournment. Counselor Vincent moves that the city council stand adjournment till the next regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by Counselor Parity Cat and Zero. Question for the council is adjournment. If you're in favor, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjournment. Thank you. Boop.